Good evening and welcome everybody. Thanks for taking the time out of your night to join us for this public hearing. This is a public hearing for a permit application received by Eagle for Bowman Drain Expansion at Seago Township in Allegan County. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'm just going to be the moderator for tonight's hearing. Before we get too far, just have to go through a couple logistical things. This is what our agenda for the night is going to look like. We're going to start off with the introduction. That's what we're doing right now. A big thing to keep in mind is there's actually two parts to this hearing tonight. We're going to start off with an informational session. That's where the applicant or the applicant's representative has an opportunity to present information on the proposed project. And we'll follow it up with a question and answer session. So you have an opportunity to ask some questions. And then after we get through that, that should run us to about six thirty. Then we're going to go through the official hearing part of the hearing tonight, and that's where everybody is going to have a chance to make a comment on the record for this project. And then we're also going to talk about the other ways to submit a comment and where to find other information, who to contact with further questions. All right. In case you haven't joined us for a hearing before, all lines are going to be muted. So you'll be able to hear us, but we can't hear you. That is until it comes time to make your statement or ask your question during the question and answer session. And we'll explain how to do that a little bit later. But you can submit questions at any time using the Q and A box for that Q and A session. So you can type those in and when we get to that point in the evening, we will try to answer as many of those as we can in that Q and A box. And then we are recording this hearing. The hearing will be posted on our YouTube channel in a couple of days. So you can revisit it at that time or forward it on if you choose. All right. At this time, I'd like to invite our other Eagle staff who are on the line to turn their cameras on and introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Derek Harrelson. I'm the district supervisor in the Kalamazoo District Office. So I supervise all the water resources programs in the districts we cover. So. Hello.
Good evening. My name is Jason Combs. I'm the analyst with the Water Resources Division out of the Kalamazoo District Office, and I'll be serving as the hearings officer tonight. I'll be the reminder the hearing is for a permanent application. W R D is received from the Allegan County Drain Commission for an expansion of the existing Bowman Drain. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jason and Derek. All right, we're going to go right into this informational session. It looks like we'll have Daniel Fredericks on the line, who is a representative for the Allegan County Drain Commission. We'll see if we can find you in the audience. And Daniel, it looks like you are unmuted on our end. You can unmute yourself. Looks like you're up. So I have your presentation here, Daniel. So is if we can get your microphone on and to work, you can just let me know when to switch slides for you, and then you can feel free to begin when you're ready. Looks like your microphone's muted right now. We just had it off and on and it looks like it's back off.
Can you hear me now, Ryan?
Oh, yep, I can hear you.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, so my name's Dan Fredericks. I'm with Land and Resource Engineering, and I'm going to be giving an overview of the application on behalf of the Allegan County Drain Commissioner. Next slide, please. So we'll go over a quick overview of the drain, then a little background about this project, some of the specific drainage issues that we're trying to resolve. We'll go into a little more detail on the engineering study and then the proposed improvements that are part of the application for Eagle. Next slide, please. So the project area is located within both the city of Atsigo and Atsigo Township. On this map right here, the blue line is the established Bowman Drain. Basically extends, it's a tributary to Pine Creek. It extends from about Nineteenth Street. That's the downstream end. And then primarily flows, I guess, east to west here. So the downstream end being the westerly end of it at Nineteenth Street. And then it kind of borders the south side of one hundred and fourth Avenue going all the way up to Fifteenth Street. The drain was established back in eighteen seventy-five. It's approximately two miles long. There are existing easements along the drain, the portion that's shown in blue. The dashed black boundary line that you can see around there in the perimeter is the contributing watershed, which is known as a drainage district. That's just under a thousand acres. Another area that we'll want to focus into today, you'll see that big red oval across there. This is really the area of concern, which is primarily south of the drain, south of one hundred and fourth Avenue, kind of near Springbrook Drive area. This area has a series of constructed channels that were built in the nineteen fifties and sixties. They go along Springbrook Drive to the kind of south sides of Prairie Wood and south side of Elm Street. So we'll be looking at these in a little more detail as we go off further here. So next slide, please. So just giving a background on the current petition project, the Allegan County Drain Commissioner received a petition for this project back in February of twenty twenty-four for basically cleaning out, widening, deepening, straightening, extending, adding branches to the Bowman Drain. The primarily, the primary driver of this was flooding, basement flooding from high groundwater within the Southgate subdivisions and the Prairie Wood condominium. It's in accordance with the Michigan Drain Code. A border determination was held on December fifteenth of twenty fifteen. At that time, the border testimony was heard from residents regarding issues related to drainage, and the border determination determined that a project was necessary and conducive to the public health, convenience, or welfare. Next slide, please. After that, Land and Resource Engineering, our firm went out there, we conducted a topographic survey of both the drain as well as these unestablished channels that were shown on the previous slide in black near the Prairie Wood subdivision. And we also conducted detailed hydrogeologic study, hydrogeological study, I should say, including soil borings, groundwater monitoring wells, staff gauges within these channels. We did this over a series of years. Initial study was done in twenty seventeen. We went back and did another public, public informational meeting back in May of twenty eighteen to basically present the proposed recommendations, estimated costs, and just soliciting public input. At that point, the project was, the Drain Commissioner decided to go forward with the project. We went into final engineering design and some additional hydrogeological analysis that was conducted between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. There were a series of easements that we'd get, that we were required to, to get to establish the new branches to the Bowman Drain. These were acquired in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. And in twenty nineteen is when we first submitted a permit application to Eagle. So that's been around four years now or four years ago. So next slide. I don't want to go too much detail into this slide here, other than just to document the primary issue that was, that was, they started this project was flooding issues documented within the subdivisions, south of the drain, kind of near Springbrook Drive, primarily related to high groundwater and basement flooding. Next slide, please. Within the non-established tributary channels, this, I apologize, the slide's a little bit fuzzy, but if we're looking, again, the blue line is the established historic Bowman Drain. These black dash lines that you can see kind of going at an angle south of one hundred and fourth towards Springbrook, and then Long Springbrook Drive, and then there's another one south of Elm Street. These are just some photographs kind of depicting those channels. Those channels, again, were constructed back in the fifties or sixties. They had not been maintained. Culverts had been put in over time. Some of these culverts were set very high, like you can see this picture shown here, which is near the convergence of the, this tributary channel with the Bowman Drain. That particular culvert was set about two feet above. The bottom of that culvert is about two feet above the Bowman Drain Channel. That backs up water within these tributaries. The gradients were very flat. They're prone, there was a significant sediment that's built up into them, and these really were not functioning as flowing channels. They were more like stagnant ponds, essentially is what these, this drainage system has turned into. Next slide, please. So as I said before, we went out there, we did a series of soil borings, of putting in pyesometers or monitoring wells for groundwater. We also reviewed historic well records from the Health Department to look at how groundwaters have fluctuated over time. And then we installed several staff gauges within the Bowman Drain and some of these tributaries. So again, this figure right here is looking at primarily the area of concern. The Bowman Drain is towards the top of this figure right here. I apologize, it's not shown very well, but it is called out there. So basically, the upper limit is roughly where the Bowman Drain is. And then what the area we're really looking at are these constructed channels that were not established part of the county drain, which are shown as the, the black dash lines throughout this area. Next slide, please. So as we were doing the initial groundwater, groundwater monitoring for a series of three months, in the spring of twenty seventeen, we were monitoring groundwater. And essentially what this shows right here, there's a lot going on up here. The bottom bar graph are individual rain events that, so we had a rain gauge out there to figure out how much rain fell over a given day. And then this other, the blue line that you see up above that is a monitoring wall at a particular location. This is basically monitoring wall or pyesometer P Z five. It's near sixteen eighty-seven Prairie Wood Court. We showed what the Prairie Wood Court's basement elevation is roughly. That's that big red line. So what this course, what this, what this figure shows is that the bar graph below is showing rainfall, and on the right side of the graph there is like the rainfall in inches. So for instance, on March thirtieth or three thirty twenty seventeen, there was about one and a quarter inches of rain that fell. And then if you go up above that, so above the red line there, you'll see that blue graph, and that blue graph is the change in groundwater at this particular monitoring location, this P Z five, which is very close to sixteen eighty-seven Prairie Wood Court. And you'll see that as you start getting rain events, that blue line, so will start spiking up. So the blue line got up to over seven hundred and eight feet elevation and over time, as it kept raining throughout that first week of April, the groundwater got as high as over seven hundred and eight point five feet, almost getting closer to seven hundred and nine. That red line, you can see basically throughout the whole monitoring duration, the groundwater level was a foot to a foot and a half, well, up to a foot and a half, let's say, feet above the basement elevation of this house. The other thing that we noted here is that it rains and the water, the water builds up, the groundwater builds up, but it doesn't recede very fast. It kind of stays up there at this high elevated condition. This kind of verified a lot of the testimony that we had had from property owners in that area, that in addition to the basement flooding, that their sump pumps are continuously running. They're trying to draw down this groundwater that just isn't, isn't going. So again, this is further documenting the problem. Now it's okay, why is this happening? So next slide, please. So this is a, a kind of a cross section, if you will, just to try to put things in perspective. You'll see that there's, there's that P Z five where it says Prairie Wood Court in red. And then there's that monitoring location of P Z five. These are, these are basically cross sections cut to where we had different groundwater monitors. So we're going from this natural water course, which is very close to Prairie Wood, that's constructed ditch. We're basically going through that towards the north, which is to the right on this particular figure that you're looking at towards the Bowman Drain. And the interesting thing to note is basically that we have what is called groundwater minding, bounding, sorry. What you would, you can see that, so this blue line indicates the, the approximate groundwater elevation and, and basically the flow. So you can see from Prairie Wood, Prairie Wood is kind of that high spot. Even though Prairie Wood is closer to the, this, what is labeled as the natural water course ditch in this map, even though it's closer to that, it's actually has, than it is to the Bowman Drain, the it's, it's what we would expect because that other ditch is closer to it, the water should actually be lowered there. But what, what is happening here is that there's heavier soils between these subdivisions and that natural water course that's not allowing any groundwater to really draw down. As a result, the Bowman Drain to the, which is considerably further to the north or to the right on this particular figure is really where the majority of the groundwater flow is going. So, so this becomes an issue where we have what is called groundwater mounting. Next, next page or slide, please. So now this is a, a plan view or a view looking down at the area. Again, you have the Bowman Drain to the north or up on this photograph right here. We have the same circled area, this area of concern, this groundwater, groundwater mounting area. You can see Prairie Wood Court labeled right there, and those are where the highest elevations are. If you look at the, just the bottom side of that, that red circled groundwater mounting area, that is where this other natural, what we're calling a natural water course, which I would call a constructed ditch. That's where that is. So you can see just how close, for instance, Prairie, Prairie Wood is to this other, other drainage way, but that drainage way really isn't providing any relief in terms of lowering the groundwater. You can see these blue arrows that kind of spring out from around this red circled groundwater mounting area that are basically flowing primarily towards the north of the Bowman Drain. So that's the one issue that we're having, the main issue we're having here and why we're having so much flooding. The modeling that we've done is correlates very well with the reports of flooding that had been provided historically. Next slide, please. So then this is a similar view, kind of come up with essentially what, what we're trying to achieve here. So we're trying to do two things. We're trying to lower the groundwater level, all right, and manage that better. So we're going to do two things to do that. We're going to utilize a series of perforated pipes, we'll call under drains, help illuminate the groundwater mounting and to draw down groundwaters, groundwater elevations. And then the other thing we need to do is to actually excavate the historic channels there to the south of Prairie Wood Court amongst the other ones that were shown there. Excavate the sediment out of those so that we have a gravity outlet to put in these drains. So right now, if those old drains are clogged with sediment, with culverts that are first too high, if we put in the under drains, they won't have a positive outlet for that groundwater to flow. That's why it's imperative that these ditches be cleaned out, not because the ditches themselves will necessarily draw, draw down, draw down the groundwater level. The monitoring that we've done actually shows that we don't, the, the soils are heavy, so the groundwater doesn't migrate through them very well. But it is absolutely imperative that we excavate out these channels so that we have a free discharge for these under drains that put in that can then go into this new, what will be a new branch to the Bowman Drain and ultimately flow, flow into the Bowman Drain. So this is kind of a schematic right here. It's that same figure that we showed before. So there's a light area, a light, light blue line kind of shows where the, the existing conditions are. And then we're going to have an under drain along Prairie Wood Court, and then also one on Elm Street to the east. And essentially what these under drains will do is to draw down the groundwater. So you'll see that instead of having that lighter blue mounted area, you'll have this dark blue, which is going to control groundwater levels, keep them below basement elevations. And basically mitigate flooding. Next slide, please. So this is an overall map. Again, the, the dashed black line there is the drainage district at roughly nine hundred and seventy acres. The, the heavier blue line is the established Bowman Drain. The more darker blue slash, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna say it's darker blue lines. Those are what we're considering the branches. Those are those constructed channels from the fifties and sixties that we need to, that clean out and the, the under drains will actually outlet into. So you have, and then the under drains themselves are shown in green, kind of the dash line in green. You'll see one that says proposed Bowman Branch Five Alignment, and then proposed Bowman, which is just on the, the north side of the Prairie Wood Court subdivision. And then the other under drain, which outlets into the Springbrook Drive ditch is near as long Elm Street. And that's labeled as Branch Four. So it would be essentially, we're establishing three, three existing ditches as branches to the Bowman Drain. Those are branches one, two, and three depicted on this figure. And we're installing two under drain systems, which are shown in green and labeled as Branch Four and Branch Five of the Bowman Drain as proposed. Next slide, please. Oops. Well, okay. So yeah, proposed projects start, just basically like I said, they're establishing these branches, cleaning them out, and then constructing the under drain system as I previously described. Next slide, please.
Hey, Dan, we want to leave some time for Q and A, so it would be great if we could wrap up the presentation.
All right. All right. So just quickly here, the, there's two scenarios that Eagle wanted us to look at. One was cleaning out the drain, which is, or just installing under drains without cleaning out these branches. And the other, the next slide is with cleaning out the branches. You can go to the next slide. The intent of this right here is that it basically that if we don't clean out the drains, the clean out the existing open channel water courses is going to drop the groundwater levels by over a foot and a half more, which is what we need to make sure we're getting below the basement. So long story short, we need to do, do everything. And then the last couple of slides, just go over. You can quick buzz through that. Again, we're just cleaning out the exist, this is typical cross section of the channel that we're trying to clean out. On the left, there's all the documented, what's been presented to Eagle as far as regulated activities. And then the final slide, you can scroll through, that's just showing some of the cleanup that we're doing on the old channel area. But um, yeah, that's the, the general gist of it. So apologize for taking up too much time and thank you.
No, thanks for the information, Dan. No, we're, we're in a, in a good spot. And I think I spoke in this book earlier, we're trying to take the Q and A to around seven o'clock maximum. So we do have some time for Q and A. So let me take a look. One, actually, let me explain how we're going to do this here. How to ask a question? You could submit your questions using the Q and A box. You'll see that at the bottom of your screen, just type it in there. Or you can raise your hand in Zoom with the raised hand icon, click on that, that'll raise your hand in Zoom, and then we'll call on you. Or if you're on the phone, I think we do at least have one or two people on the phone. You can select pound two on your receiver, and that will raise your hand in Zoom. And we'll call on you. So that you can ask your questions. So we'll kind of go back and forth between the question and answer box and the people who have their hand raised and when I ask their question verbally. So we're going to go ahead and do that. So let's see, Jason and Derek want to turn their cameras on, and we will begin this Q and A session. All right. All right. And I should also mention, so this is the part in the, in the evening that we have an opportunity to ask questions on the project. If you have a statement that you want to make, that's going to be the next part after this question and answer informational session part. So hold on to those, those statements. I think there are a few statements in here. Okay, here we go. And, and with, with these, Dan, if there's a question on a, it looks like there's some question on slides. I can back up to a previous slide if, if you need to. Like the first one I have here is what were the pink lots? Yeah, and let's be
Those were basically, those were just as, as part of some of the initial studies we did. We did actually, we sent out questionnaires for people talking about flooding and if had they had basement flooding or, or other flooding on their properties and different things like that. So that's what, that's what those slides were, just, just strictly from questionnaires filled out by property owners.
All right. Will the under drain part of the project be underneath Elm Street or besides it? And then if besides it, the road, besides the road, would it be on the north or south side?
Let me pull up that one. It's on the, but yeah, I don't have, I've got a, let me just pull up my sketches here. It's going to be on the Hold on. I don't want to misquote this. That's why.
Yeah, no problem.
So I'm not, so just, just so you guys know too, the, the, the primary engineer on this project is, is six, so I'm filling in for him, but I know most of the background on it. So the Elm Street under drain was, is proposed to be within the road right of way itself of Elm Street.
Okay, so it sounds like not underneath Elm Street, but besides it in the right of way.
We haven't, at this point, since we don't have final engineering drawings, we're still going for permits here. It's, I, I'm just going to say that it's going to be in the, in the right of way. But I won't say whether or not it would be under the road or not.
Okay. All right. Yeah, thanks. And then another one, and provided emails, you sent a copy of this report. I guess I'm not sure, do you mean the slides? If, if you ask that question, it'd be great if you could provide some clarification on the report that you're looking to get a copy of. And I know, I'm assuming some of this information is in my Enviro. Jason, if you can have any clarification on, on that or?
Sure. Most, all the documents that have been submitted as part of a permit application are located on our website. It's my Enviro. If you had commented during the public notice period, it's basically that same website. If you go Google my Enviro, there's an area where it'll talk about, you can basically, you can look up, look up Bowman Drain, and you'll be able to access the documents that way. It's, during the, during the hearing, my contact information will be available. So if somebody wants to reach out to me directly, I can, I can email that link to them as well.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Jason. All right. So what we'll do, I've got one more question right now in the Q and A box, and then I'll go to any raised hands. Let's see here, for the ditch, this is going back to the ditch on the south side of Elm Street. Would that require access through backyards? Or would all access be from the farm on the south side of the ditch? And then there's a follow-up specifically the cleaning out of that ditch, which I believe is what was proposed.
So we, as part of this project there, we did obtain easements through all these areas. You know, at this point, this is, that's a really specific construction question that we're not even close to being to that level yet. We still got to get through this permit if there's even going to be a project. So I can't answer that at this time.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. See, I'm not seeing any raised hands right now, so I'll continue to go through the Q and A box. I've got some more that popped up. Oh, actually, I do have one. Bruce, oops. Looks like you just dropped. All right. Bruce Mels, Melays, looks like your hand is raised. We can unmute you, and then you can ask your question after you unmute yourself. There should be a microphone icon. All right. Are you there, Bruce?
I'm, I am here, and I'm here with a neighbor, and actually he has a question, and it's Tom. So go ahead, Tom.
My question is, I asked the green line, number four. That easement, I believe, is sixty feet wide. And my question is that when they, if this project goes forward and they have to dig the ditch, if you will, to lay the pipe, is, is the intent to make that at in the middle, run it down the middle of the sixty feet? Or is it not justified totally one way to the north or to the south? Did that make sense how I?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the, the intent right now is it would be to locate it under the road, correct? But again, we don't have, it's still preliminary at this point.
Talk about this one. Not the green one, number four.
Number
Oh, sorry, number five.
Number five is a question.
Yeah, yeah, number five.
That one is not in the road.
Yeah, that one's, no, that's in the woods. So, and
Yeah, number five is in the woods, correct.
Yeah. And a, and a follow-up to that is that you guys have any sense of if this gets approved or how long that process is, when this project would move forward?
We would, if this gets approved, we'd bid it out this winter and construct it next year.
Next year, meaning?
Twenty twenty four.
Spring, fall?
Probably summer. Probably summer.
Okay. And, and why, and why I'm on this page, the, the gentleman who provided this. Picture referred, I thought, uh, number one of the purple lines and that does not show anywhere. What happened to that? I guess I'm confused there.
Think the, I can see, I see the purple. I, I don't know if they're dark blue or purple. I'm quasi color.
So, so there's two, three, four, five. Is there a number one?
A, a bullet. Number one is, number one is actually there, it's, it's. It's that angled one that kind of it would, it flows to the northwest, south of, south and west of prairie, south and west of like.
Looks like it's number two. So, so.
So that number two is, no, those are, so those don't, I, I still have those on the, those were like drawing sheets. This was a cover sheet from an eagle. Permit. So that's like sheet two, sheet three, sheet four, sheet five. So yeah, look at the little where it says. If you look to the left of that, you'll see at the, there's a, it says. Yep.
Okay. So, and, and one other quick question. The reason why Tom is here is because. Uh, branch number five goes right through his property and was not notified as awe. And I even sent in a. Text several times to somebody here and email asking why he wasn't on this mailing list and I'm.
I, I think it would be because really what's being regulated by Eagle are these existing channels. So one, two and three. So if he's, you know, removed from being adjacent to this, he wasn't on the list. So some of the people that would be on those. That under drain.
Yes.
Would be, would not, are not included as part of this. Uh, permit application, if that makes sense. That's why they wouldn't be.
Okay.
And maybe, I don't know if, if Jason or Derek have any, you know, say, want to say about how we would provide notification or, or the public notice or.
Sure, I can, I can talk a little about, about that, Ryan. So, um, like was stated earlier, uh. Our regulatory authority extends basically to only to the stream, to the actual stream channels. Um, in this permit application. So for these types of applications, if it's, if it's something that needs to be public notice, then it's usually. Adjacent property owners are the ones that are notified for the, for these types of projects. So. So if there might be people that might not have necessarily been required, um. As part of that. So, so that's, that's pretty much our main, our main thing is the, our main. What we are reviewing are the impacts of the streams.
And we're gonna, we're gonna move on, uh, right now. Thank you for the question. Uh, I have a couple of questions in the Q and A box and we're at about time when we need to move on. Um, but yeah, thanks. Thanks for asking those questions. All right. So the two I have in here, we'll try to get through these quickly. Um. Should we plan on most of the trees north of Prairie Wood Court being removed? And when, oh, when would it begin? I think you addressed that, uh, but maybe this is referring to the trees north of Prairie Wood.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, if we don't have a permit, we don't have a project. So, but ideally. If we got a, a permit here soon, it, the ideally we'd be. Uh, doing that clearing and con, and constructing this summer. Um, but until there's a permit in hand, I, I can't even speculate on when it might happen.
Gotcha. Yeah, thanks. And this will be the last question. Um, a few words about how this will be paid for, about how the.
Yeah. So, uh, basically how, how it's set up there is that everybody that's within the drainage district that. And one of the previous, actually in this slide right here, that heavier dark black dash line. And then you can see the area that pops out with a little more clarity in the aerial. Any, all properties within that are liable to some level of assessment. There'll also be assessments to the city of Atsigo, um, the Atsigo Township. The, um, county road commission, the county at large. So usually like. The, the counties, the townships, the county, the township cities are going to take up a decent chunk of that off the top. And then the remainder is going to be assessed to property owners. Um, and that's going to be based on, on benefit. So there'll probably be. Multiple zones and those that are, are receiving more benefit, um. Would receive, would probably have a higher, um, potentially higher assessment. Does not mean that if you are, if your property is located on the drain, that that means you're going to pay more money. That's not necessarily the case. Um, so at that point, this is really not a topic for this particular, um. Uh, this meeting really, that would be something if the project is determined necessary or, uh, uh, I'm sorry, if the permit is, is, um. Issued that we would, uh, there would be a, a day of review held by the drain commissioner, at which point in time we would discuss assessments. So again, that, in that regard, that's. Um, kind of beyond the scope of what we're here for tonight.
All right. Yeah. Thanks for that info, Dan, and to, uh, all of you for asking, uh, those questions. We're going to move on to the next, uh, part of the evening. Which is going to be the hearing portion. But before we do that, um, I just want to go through. The other ways to submit an official comment in case you didn't want to make a statement tonight. There are some other ways. You can do that through Eagles My Enviro system. Um, by accessing the public hearing event under submission number HPP HE eight two R four one six two. You see the link there? We're also going to be putting that in the chat. Um, so you'll be able to see that to pop up. Uh, and you can go to that and make a comment. Uh, or by mail to Eagle Water Resources Division. Kalamazoo District Office and that's seven nine five three Adobe Road. Kalamazoo, Michigan, four nine zero zero nine. And the comment period after this public hearing will be open for ten days, which is December twenty third. And I should mention, I, in case you miss it or change your mind. Uh, I will be posting this, uh, slide again a little bit later on, uh, after the hearing. All right. With that, uh, Jason, I'd like to invite you to read the opening statement for us.
Thanks, thanks, Ryan. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason Combs. I am the district representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment. Great Lakes and Energy. I'll be serving as the hearings officer for this public hearing on Eagle submission number. HPP dash HE eight two dash R four one six two. With me tonight is Derek Haraldson, district supervisor in the Kalamazoo District Office. To describe how this is going to work tonight, I will begin with some background information about why we are here tonight. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your, your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide comments and we will spend the majority of time tonight listening to those, listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will read the closing statement. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams. Wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream or wetland, constructing a dam. Constructing a marina, place, placing shore protection or constructing docks and building in a designated critical sand dune. The law governing the, those responsibilities is the National Resources and Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety-four PA four fifty-one as amended. We are here tonight because train commissioner Denise Metamare has proposed the following. To expand the existing baum and drain by including three new branches of the baum and drain. Branch one will dredge approximately three hundred and eight cubic yards of stream bottom land in two areas. One area approximately three thousand fifty feet long. A foot wide and one and a half feet deep and one area approximately of four hundred and seventy feet long. Five point nine eight feet wide and one and a half feet deep. Will then place filter fabric and approximately ninety-two cubic yards of eight to sixteen inch riprap and approximately. One thousand six hundred and twenty square feet of the bottom land to a maximum depth of one and a half feet. In addition, branch one should, shall have, uh, shall remove two existing culverts and replace one existing culvert. With a circular plastic culvert that is a minimum diameter of four feet and a maximum length of a hundred and sixty feet. Bearing the culvert approximately six inches in the stream bottom land. I'll also install a tile with a twelve inch diameter outfall in the bottom land of branch one. Branch two will dredge approximately four hundred and forty-nine cubic yards of stream bottom land in an area approximately one thousand nine hundred feet long. Four point nine feet wide and one point three feet deep and place filter fabric in approximately eighty cubic yards of eighteen to sixteen inch diameter riprap. And approximately one thousand three hundred and eighty-five square feet of the bottom land to a maximum depth of one and a half feet. In addition, branch two shall have three existing culverts removed and replaced with circular plastic culverts that are a maximum diam, or. Excuse me, a minimum diameter of four and a half feet and a maximum length of eighty feet. Each culvert shall be buried approximately six inches in stream bottom land. I'll also install a tile with a twelve inch diameter outfall in the, in the bottom land of branch two. Branch three will dredge approximately. Will dredge approximately two hundred and five cubic yards of stream bottom land in an area approximately one thousand one hundred and forty feet long. Two point seven feet wide and one point eight feet deep and place filter fabric, fabric in approximately five cubic yards of riprap. And approximately ninety square feet of the stream bottom land to a maximum depth of one and a half feet. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice. Meet certain criteria set by part three oh one inland lakes and streams of act four fifty-one. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the stream. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of part three oh one of act four fifty-one. Eagle is charged to make the following considerations as required by section three zero one oh six of part three oh one. The department, one, the department shall issue a permit if it finds that the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust. Which is defined. Excuse me, which is defined essentially as the public's right to, uh. For, to, to navigation, for mooring vessels, um, and for general uses, including bathing. Or, excuse me, that's for riparian rights. Um, um, the public trust is, is defined as. The paramount, the public's paramount right for access, for navigation and for fishing and for the department's responsibilities. To, uh, prevent, um. Uh, pollution to, to, um, to lakes or streams. On the other consideration is that the department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure. Will unlawfully impair or destroy any of the waters or nat, other natural resources of the state. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the baum and drain expansion. Project an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law. Not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there is widespread support or opposition to the project. In just a moment, I will outline the procedures we'll use for taking your comments. But before I do so, I need to mention that the notice of this hearing was published in the Atsigo and Plainwell Union Enterprise Newspaper. In the Thursday, November thirtieth edition. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide, raise your hand in the zoom toolbar. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. Step one, or first, the applicant and or their consultant has already had an opportunity to describe the proposed project. Second, we will then call on those who've indicated in their registration that they would like to speak. After that, we will call on all those that raise their hand in their zoom toolbar that they would like to make a comment if they haven't already been called upon. As a reminder, if you are participating in this hearing via telephone only, follow the directions of the moderator on how to identify that you would like to make a comment. You may also submit your comments to Eagle via our My Enviro portal, email or US mail. When all the comments have been completed, we will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmutted. As you begin your comments, please state your name in any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given four minutes to make their comments. We will indicate to you when you have a minute left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, we will indicate when your time is ended. I ask that we all be cour, courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please also recognize that Eagle staff is here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be a part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for ten days from the date of this hearing, ending on December twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Additional in, information and comments submitted in writing during the ten day public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit for the project as de, as proposed. Or with modifications, or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle My Enviro portal website and searching for the application number. HPP dash HE eight two dash R four one six two. Thank you for your attention. We'll begin calling the names of those who have indicated that they would like to make a statement.
Yeah, many thanks for, uh, reading that, Jason. Um, as Jason mentioned, I have a list of names. I have two people on the list who indicated dur, during registration that they wanted to make a comment. We'll start with those two people. After that, uh, we'll go to anybody else who wants to make a comment and you can raise your hand in zoom. Uh, to go after that, uh, or if you're on the phone, you can select pound two. Uh, everyone will have an opportunity to make a comment. Uh, it'll be one comment per person. As mentioned, everybody gets four minutes. If your name is called and you have somebody else on the line who would like to make a comment, uh, let me know that and they'll be, be able to make their comment at that time. Um, we'll have a timer actually that you'll see in the upper right-hand corner of your screen that will count down from four minutes. So you'll be able to see how much time you have. And then when you have one minute left, you'll hear the sound. Let you know you have a minute left, um, as you're making your comment. And so with that, uh, we're going to go ahead and get started. Um, you know, if you, please list your name and any. Um, association you may have, affiliation rather. Uh, the first person on my list is Zaina Williams. So Zaina, we are going to unmute you. And then, uh, you can unmute yourself and you can begin when you're ready.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Um, I live on Prairie Wood Court. We've been here from the beginning. Um, I've spoken with the Atsigo Township many times and PCI expressing concern of water table getting worse. With each new house built, we would get relief of water table for approximately four months out of the year. And it kept changing. In some years we'd get one month or less. There's neighbors behind us said their homes did not have issues until we started building on Prairie. The. Flood companies have been out here many numerous times. In our area where our road floods, there was supposed to be a drain. It's stated in our deed and they never put one in. The developer and the township never enforced that drain to be put in. We've replaced many pumps, but top of the line pumps. Looked like pump graveyard going on in my pump room. We installed a standalone generator. We have had to rip up carpet padding, drywall, baseboard. After the floodings, after all the floodings we have, we still have not repaired for fear of damage again. This is the second time in all, in almost nineteen years that we've had like drought like. Conditions where we didn't have to worry about this pump running constantly. I get information from consumers, how high my bill is, how much I use. But. We have followed due process. If all these homes built in South Gate and Prairie Wood got permits and or inspections approved by Atsigo Township and. PCI, how is it that we're all having homes that have water table issues? That's like my main question, I guess. I'm just really concerned after all this time that. We're just still nowhere. We're still in the same boat. When you talk, when, um, Dan Fredericks talked, his presentation he gave. Most of that, I had already seen that at the meeting in May of eighteen, two thousand eighteen. So, that's my comment.
All right. Yeah. Thank you for making the comment. All right. Next up is Tristan, uh, Livak or Livak. Tristan, we are going to unmute you and then you can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready. Tristan, we are gonna unmute you and then you can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Hi, everybody. Um, yeah, Tristan Livak, thanks for, uh, taking my comment. Uh, I also live on, um, Prairie Wood Court, uh, sixteen eighty-three. Um, we moved in here in September two thousand and fourteen. Uh, right previous, before we moved in, the homeowners that we bought the house from had to do major, uh, basement work because of flooding. Um, and I've actually secured that documentation. In the nearly ten years we've lived here, um, we have replaced ten sump pumps, um, and spent over six thousand dollars. Um, that was before we got warranty coverage, um, so actual costs would be much higher than that. The biggest problem that we have, um, at our location here is that we can pump water, like we have three sump pumps that run. Uh, we can pump water as much as we want, but there's simply nowhere for the water to go. Um, so we just start recycling our water over and over again. Uh, we have had, I believe, four more houses built on our road since, um, we moved in, which is great for the neighborhood and we love it, but at the same time, it also takes up room and, uh, uh, for water to displace. Most of those houses are built, uh, nearly four feet higher than our house. And our neighbors right next door to us last spring, actually, um, their, their, their basement, which is four feet higher than ours flooded as well. Um, last spring, unfortunately, our basement flooded two times. Most alarmingly is that it flooded both times because our sump pumps simply couldn't keep up with the amount of inflow of water. Um, so, uh, the only, uh, I guess the, the only answer we had for that is to simply add more than three pumps. So I am just here to make this comment to strongly advocate, uh, to get this work done. It will drastically change my backyard area, um, as most of the trees and woodlands will be probably removed. Um, but I think at this point, um, we are more than willing to do that to have some type of relief because I said the biggest problem is that there's simply nowhere for the water to go. Um, if, if there was, um, and we could lower that water table, then I think that we would, uh, finally invest in actually finishing our basement again. Unfortunately, we've re-carpeted our basement two times over. And this, and this last, uh, episode where we flooded twice last spring, we simply just decided to keep our basement, um, bare. Um, other than that, I think that's pretty much my public comment. Again, I just want to, um, really advocate for this, uh, for this project to go through. It was almost ten years ago that I first sat in a meeting and, and made these same comments. Um, so I'm really hoping that we can make some headway this time. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Tristan. All right, so those are the two people on my list. Uh, so if anybody else would like to make a comment, you can just raise your hand in Zoom by selecting the raise hand icon. Or if you are on the phone, uh, you can select pound two on your receiver and that will also raise your hand. Uh, so I'm just gonna go down, uh. All right, first up is Nicholas Bowers. Uh, Nicholas, we are gonna unmute you and then you can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Uh, my name's Nick Bowers. I live next to Tristan. I'm actually the one who's built four feet higher. We just built our house. We've been in it for less than two years and we've sustained, uh, four thousand dollars in bills already. Thanks to the water and flooding. We thought it would be safe putting a sump pump in and being four feet higher and it hasn't stopped the groundwater from coming up. So we're also in support of this project. Uh, that's really all I have to add to the whole thing.
All right, thank you, Nicholas.
Thank you.
All right, next up is, uh, oops. Looks like I just had, all right, I don't have a raised hand anymore. Is there anybody else who would? Okay, here we go. Uh, Colleen Smith, and if, if you, um, if you wanna make a comment, just leave your hand raised and then we'll, uh, calling you in turn. So Colleen Smith, uh, it looks like you're unmuted. You can begin when you're ready.
Okay, perfect. Uh, yep, Colleen Smith, Richard Smith. We moved here approximately six years ago. We were forewarned before we bought this house that, uh, this easement was, uh, being planned, um, due to the wa, groundwater levels. Um, since we've been here, um, we fortunately, very fortunately, have not had to, uh, fix any damage that has occurred to our basement. Um, I don't know that, how that's possible. We have a daylight basement with some windows and there's a ditch or a little valley, uh, that has a drain, um, in the bottom of that. I don't know if you all can visualize that. But, um, it's pretty deep. I would say it's at least five and a half feet deep where the daylight windows are. Um, anyway, um, when we get heavy rains or moderate rains, I would say, uh, we, that little ditch does fill up quite a bit. We've had it to the point where it's been a half an inch, at least a half an inch, maybe an inch, um, that's being generous. Um, where that water has almost gotten up to the windows, uh, to where it would leak in through the windows. Um, so I think the drain was helped, our drain where that ditches was helpful to get that water out. Um, fast enough to where it was, um, you know, not able, not able to come into the house. Uh, my kids wanted a swimming pool, but, um, and they wanna go swimming in that pool, but I don't think that that is the kind of pool I wanna have in my backyard. So, and it does take a good couple, two, three days for that to go down enough. Um, this last year also, um, if Kyle's listening, he can, uh, agree that we did have a marsh between our houses where our some, my sump pump was constantly pumping, um, into the, between, into the, um, uh, the middle of our yards, uh, between our houses there. So, um, we also had to, uh, replace our sump pump this year as well just because of the, uh, constant running of the, the, the sump pump basically. So, um, yeah, and living next to Zaina, no offense, Zaina, but I'm tired of hearing your sump pump run this summer. Uh, so it's just constantly pumping, constantly draining and, um, yeah, so, and I know Zaina, she's had lakes in her backyard, uh, like, um, between our yards and in towards the back, there's been like nice little ponds. Um, there was some moss that grew. Um, there were birds bathing in it and, uh, frogs. Um, my kids went back there with their shoes on one time and got nasty muddy shoes, all disgusting. And I had to throw those shoes out because it was just disgusting with whatever was growing in that moss, uh, that dirty water. So, um, oh, and then the dog is another story, so. But, um, other than the massive amount of water that we get close to our basements and outside the, between our yards and also the replacement of our sump pump, that's pretty much what I wanted to say.
All right, next up is, uh, John Venuanisen. Sorry, John, if I didn't pronounce that correctly. Um, you are unmuted and you can begin when you're ready.
Well, I believe you did a fair job with that. Wanna say hi to all my neighbors. I know all of these people personally. I'm not a neighbor yet. I have the newest house in the subdivision. It's going up right now. It's about forty to fifty percent complete. The sad thing is I heard reports while I was planning my house. Every time I talked to a neighbor, I jacked up basement floor another foot. Right now, I'm just about over top of the cars that go by. Uh, they, I lost all confidence that there was going to be any way that I wouldn't get wet, except for jack it up or forget about a basement, just go in the slab. I think we're okay now, but you've heard the comments they've made. They thought they were okay too, and there's nothing more disheartening than seeing one of those big trucks pull up with a sixty-yard dumpster on it and know that you're gonna be filling it. I'm fully in support of the four last people's comments. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, John. All right, uh, next up, Bruce Malays or, uh, Melis? There, Bruce?
Yeah, uh, actually, I'm with Bruce. My name's Tom Pavlak.
Oh, Tom, yep.
Yep, and so my property actually butts up against everyone who spoke tonight. So a lot of that water that they were pumping out ended up on my property. But, uh, I guess that's the way gravity flows. But my question, uh, goes beyond this and that is moving forward. Uh, the township who gives permits for building homes back there, uh, they are obviously well aware of this water problem. And if they're allowing houses to be built and they're saying, uh, you can set the basement at this level and you'll be fine and ends up not being fine, uh, do they bear any responsibility for that type of, uh, error? And, and what to prevent this from happening after, after this installation? You know, how, how do we know that they won't permit again and it will be wrong as far as a building permit goes? Well, okay, I guess that's a quite, it's supposed to be a comment. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm done.
That's all right. Tom, we will provide Jason's contact information after this. So if you have any follow-up questions, you, you can ask it that, ask Jason afterwards. But yeah, you're right, right now it's just for comments. All right, thank you, Bruce. Or Tom, rather. All right, next up is Kyle Vensack. Kyle, you are unmuted on our end. Uh, you can begin when you're ready.
Hi, yeah, my name is Kyle. I live at, uh, Prairie Wood, at the end lot between, uh, Colleen and Sarah and Jake Jewett, and we've definitely had our sump pump running basically nine months a year to a place where there's definitely a pond on both sides of our house. So Colleen's got a pond and then we're putting a pond between us and the neighbors. Um, I've done a little digging this summer to reroute some of those to hopefully put it in a better place, but it's severe and those pumps do not stop. And it's a place where we have one and a lot of our engineering friends have advised us to put a second one in because of the water table, just to make sure we don't have an issue. Cause we have a full finished beautiful basement and we really don't want that to be ruined. So just wanna comment that everything I've heard seems, uh, accurate and, uh, I support this as well and my wife. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kyle. All right, and then Tristan, uh, has, Livak has your hand raised again. Tristan, uh, we're gonna unmute you. Is there someone else there who would like to make a comment?
Actually, this, oh, sorry. Yes, this is Alicia Livak, um, Tristan's wife. I just wanted to make a couple of comments too about, um, the levels of water that we have between houses and in front of our house. Um, specifically like in the road, whenever there's a heavy, heavy rain or during the springtime after all the snow has thawed, we have what we call Lake Livak between our house and the Bowers' house. Um, and it's pretty deep. It would probably come up to like almost the kid's knees, maybe six inches or so. Um, and it'll usually dry up, oh, like in the summertime, maybe three months into spring or so. Um, and then this past spring, we had quite a bit of rainfall and our whole entire road of Prairie Wood Court in front of our house was completely underwater from, um, probably about, I don't know, five feet in to our front yard and then over the road into the next yard was completely submerged in water. And that's not the first time that's happened. It happens quite often. Usually, a typical rainfall will get, um, quite a few inches in the front part of our yard. That's where our sump pump actually, one of them discharges. So it's just mounting all this water, but, um, but yeah, just to comment on that and just to also reiterate the fact that there's a lot of standing water other than just the, the groundwater that gets in our basement. Thank you.
Uh, thanks for your comment. All right, uh, are there any other comments from, from people who have not yet made a comment? Uh, we'll give a couple of seconds here, uh, to give an opportunity in case you, you would like to make a comment, just raise your hand in Zoom using the raised hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're calling in by phone, and we have a couple of phone and callers at least, uh, you can select pound two and on your receiver and what that will do is raise your hand in Zoom and we'll call on you using the last four digits of your phone number. And so I'm still not seeing any other raised hands tonight. So thank you all for making those comments. We're gonna go ahead and close out this part of the hearing. So Jason, would you like to read the closing statement for us tonight?
Yep, thanks, Ryan. Thank you for your comments and cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, we may submit additional written comments until December twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. Just remind those that may still wanna submit a comment, comments can be submitted via My Enviro Portal, email, or U S mail. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again.
Yeah, thanks, Jason. As Jason mentioned, I've got this other slide up on other ways to submit an official comment in case you chose not to tonight or have additional comments to give. You can do that through My Enviro, um, submission number H P P H E eight two R four one six two, and I believe the link is going in the chat. Or by mail to Eagle Water Resources Division, Kalamazoo District Office, seven nine five three Adobe Road, Kalamazoo, Michigan, four nine zero zero nine. And the comment period of, after this public hearing will be open for ten days, which will be December twenty-third. And then as we indicated before, I think it was also put in the chat, um, if you have further questions and we did, or we didn't get to your question during the Q and A period, you can contact Jason Combs and Jason can be reached at two six nine five six eight two six nine three. Again, that's two six nine five six eight two six nine three. Or by email at combsj eight, and that's C O M B S J eight, as in the number eight, at michigan.gov. And again, that's C O M B S J eight at Michigan, M I C H I G A N dot gov. All right, with that, any final comments for us tonight, Derek?
Yeah, just appreciate everybody taking some time out of their, uh, busy schedules on a, uh, a week night to, uh, participate in the hearing. Uh, I thought it was a good civil discourse. So, yeah, I just wanna thank everybody for participating and, uh, uh, hope you enjoy the rest of your evening.
All right, thank you, Derek, and thank you, Jason, and for all of you for participating, um, like Derek had mentioned. Final thing I'll leave you with is just a reminder that this hearing was recorded and it'll be on, uh, Eagle's YouTube channel in a few days. So with that, I hope you all have a great night. Thank you very much.